Now it's time for that pledge allegiance again and Kathleen, I don't know how you did that. I get so nervous. So I might forget the words. So is there anybody here who could possibly help me with the pledge allegiance? Oh, is the student council and service club from J C here? Yes. Come on up. Come on up.
Good evening, Bano Snolches and Bon Swary. We are students from Julian Curtis School of World Languages. Thank you for having us. We want to share a few reasons why we love being students at Julian Curtis.
At J C, we celebrate kindness and care by practicing the norms, having post-school assemblies, and writing school-wide kindness notes.
At J C, we celebrate everyone's differences every day, especially during United Nations Week, which ends with our U N Day Parade and family food tasting event.
At J C, we notice how students were feeling through surveys. We have worked hard at making sure each student feels that they belong.
We all proud of who we are. Sixty countries, thirty languages, one great school.
Enjoy the rest of your meeting. As we say each morning at J C, be happy and learn a lot.
That was awesome. Well done. Thank you, J C. Well, that was great and saving me. So it didn't mess up the pledge allegiance. You guys did a great job. So thank you to our tribute to our wonderful country and great kids. That's fantastic. Now we need a we need to approve the minutes. A motion to approve the consent agenda. Would you like to make that motion? You want me to? Oh, I'll make that motion then. Could I have a second? We have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Seven zero. Bye, everybody. Thanks for coming. Fantastic. Trish, thank you. Oh, awesome. That was great, though. It was great. Thank you. So now we have the G H S student government comments. We have Mitch. Come on up. Mitch Goldstein. Mitch talked about in our meeting and our ex-con meeting how people should be much nicer when it comes to running for office, and I could not agree with him more.
Yeah, it was definitely good to have that conversation. I think I think sometimes like the administrators at school are not as aware of what actually happens. So hearing it from a student's perspective is really important. So good evening, board members and the few meeting attendees we have here tonight. My name is Mitch Goldstein. I'm the student body vice president. I want to start by once again addressing the new courses awaiting approval for the G H S course of study guide. Over my four years at G H S, I've always enjoyed the large variety of courses our school offers. But as I've become older, I've realized that sometimes at the highest level, students lose the ability to choose their courses based off of their interests because there's only so many courses available. So by approving the addition of the guitar two and honors linear algebra classes, most advanced students will be given a greater diversity of courses when it comes to selecting their courses. And I think that's a really a great thing. Back at Greenwich High School, a lot has been going on. Before the February break, students enjoyed a semester to kickoff spirit week that include fun activities in the student center, class dress up days and daily giveaways. Additionally, student activities and several other student organizations hosted a Super Bowl food drive that was rather successful. The spirit week was a great way to welcome the break and the second semester. In addition to great events and charity initiatives at G H S, the student government continues to brainstorm new ways to improve our school through academic policies. The executive committee is developing a proposal to consider removing the A plus from G H S grading scale in order to support students' mental health and well-being. Excom finishes, once Excom finishes researching the grading system at other local high schools and collecting feedback from students and faculty, we will be presenting the proposal where we hope to have a lively discussion about this idea with administrators and faculty. While it's hard to believe our student government election for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year is right around the corner. In March, the election packet and application will be published and students will be able to decide whether they want to run to represent their classmates. The current Excom had a great discussion yesterday about the appropriate use of social media during these elections, and we are continuing to work with students and administrators to ensure that the election goes as smoothly as possible. With proper guidelines, we are optimistic that the candidates will run a clean, lively, and competitive campaign. On behalf of the student body, I want to thank you all for your time, and I look forward to continuing to work with the board throughout the rest of the school year. I now pass the microphone over to our student body president, Isabella Gaya.
Some of you might have noticed Isabella had an article written about her in the paper. Now she treats it very modestly and she sort of blushes when we mention it. But I do have to say that what that does for people like myself and the board up here to see the things that you've accomplished in such a short time in your young age makes us very, very happy and proud of the work we're doing here. So I know you're modest about it. It's a very nice way to be, but we are more than proud to see things like that from students that we put all our work into and all the heck of a lot of work that you do. So thank you.
Well, thank you. You, uh, every time someone brings it up, I get flattered every time. I get a little blush in the face. But so good evening, Chairman Kelly, Dr. Jones, members of the board, and our extensive meeting attendees. I am Isabella Gega, the student body president at Greenwich High School. As joy fills the seniors that have completed their college journey, others wait for April for decisions. As always, we wish the seniors the best as they set forth their plans for the future. But for now, the rollout of G H S senior option program has begun. Seniors are scouring the community. Sorry, I'm a little short. Scouring the community for the perfect internship opportunity and a passion project to fit their interest in our optimism, and we are optimistic about a smooth application process. A few short weeks ago, student government welcomed this year's eighth graders to our school to orient them with our beloved high school. They were, they were familiarized with the variety of academic courses, extracurricular opportunities, and the support services that are offered within our school community. We encouraged them to get involved when they arrive at G H S. Beyond this, Jamie Smith, the senior class president, and I went to the core. We spoke to the next year's freshman parents. Our meshes were clear and concise. Their child is in the best place possible. Hoping to improve school spirit, each class continues brainstorming activities encouraging students engage with their peers. In addition, the class officers are discussing with their representatives and class advisors to determine feasible and fun events for the second semester. Additionally, the freshman class officers are working on a proposal related to learning centers. In their proposal, they would like freshmen who earn above a certain GPA unweighted in the third quarter to replace their learning centers and study halls with open blocks. This has been a favorite idea of many freshman classes in the past, and we are looking forward to discussing the possibilities. Furthermore, we continue to collaborate with food services to improve Cardinal Cafe. Mr. Nannarello and Chef Nico have been beyond accommodating to our needs in the cafeteria, and we believe the cafeteria has been making significant improvements. We are transitioning back to free lunches and are confident that this change will not offer alter the cafeteria quality. Receptive to the ideas regarding lunch efficiency, expanding menu options, and implementing culturally diverse food options, food services has just about returned to pre-pandemic standards. As students return from break, we remain excited about the second half of the year. Thank you all very much, and I look forward to speaking to you next month.
Very impressive. Great. We have the rugby season coming up soon, don't we? Yes. Fantastic. Uh, we have G E A, but Lil is on vacation, so she won't be able to speak. Uh, we have then next P TAC Francis Wu Nobe will be our next speaker, and here she is. Hi, Francis.
Okay. Good evening. I hope all the students, teachers, and a few parents enjoyed a restful and healthy break. I am Francis Wu Nobe, mom of three G P S kids and the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three president of Greenwich Parent Teacher Advisory Council. P TAC is a nonpartisan nonprofit organization made up of a governing board of directors, presidents of all fifteen school P T As and seventeen powerhouse advisory committees covering academics, buildings, curriculum enrichment, and more. Moms, dads, working parents, retired parents, stay-at-home, work-at-home parents, and guardians. If you are ready to be more engaged in our schools, please join your school P T A today. If you're seeking district-wide impact, please consider a P TAC role. Nominating for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year is now open. Contact nominating through the P TAC Greenwich website. Turning to hot topics and tonight's consent agenda, P TAC continues to advocate for our school buildings. In the past, it was the, it was the community and parents just like you who advocated to build New Lebanon School, Hamilton Avenue School, the Performing Arts Center at G H S, Cos Cob School, and years earlier, the original Greenwich High School. Now, today, the community and parents are advocating for the desperately needed new buildings and building upgrades at Central Middle School, Old Greenwich School, Julian Curtis School, Riverside School, Greenwich High School, and Western Middle School. We've seen Chairman Kelly representing this B O E and advocating for the schools at the B E T budget meetings. We're very grateful for the political leadership and advocacy shown by this B O E for the full capital budget that you all approved. Tonight and every day until the Board of Education budget is fully approved, P TAC will stand together with this board with our community and with Central Middle School, Old Greenwich School, Julian Curtis School, Riverside School, Greenwich High School, and Western Middle School. We look forward to looking back with you and being proud of the legacy that will be created with a kind of top-tier school facilities that the town of Greenwich deserves. We look forward to seeing buildings that will be used day in and day out for many, many years. These schools are our town's future. For our teachers listening tonight, please apply for a Greenwich Alliance Reaching Out Grant by March twenty-fourth. Science, V R, theater, sensory rooms, these were all educator ideas fueled by the Greenwich Alliance. Coming up next week, P TAC welcomes all to attend the P TAC Monthly Meeting Public Presentation on Friday, March third at eleven A M. We've invited Patrick Briggs, the Avid Program Regional Director, to tell us about how Avid is implemented in others, implemented in other school districts and get the most out of the school experience. Learn more at the P TAC website. And for those of you who haven't yet given, today is Fairfield County Giving Day. Give to your favorite local charity today by eleven fifty-nine fifty-nine. Greenwich Alliance, Kids in Crisis, Neighbor to Neighbor, Abilis, these are all local organizations that support our students. Give now at F C gives dot org. And any music lovers out there, Karen, send our eighth graders to D C, not just this year, but every year. Dancing for D C at Old Greenwich Social Club on March eighth, six to nine P M. Buy your tickets and check out the generous raffles at the Greenwich Alliance website. In closing, will you share an update on universal free lunch? And as always, thank you for everything you do for our kids.
Now it's a public comment time. David Raven, is he here? David, are you here? Is he online possibly?
I am not seeing his name in the attendee list for online.
Okay, we'll circle back around. Julie Feriniers. Sorry, I messed that up. Good, thanks. Karen corrected me, so I thought I might have done it badly.
Good evening, Chairman Kelly, Dr. Jones, members of the Board of Ed and Cabinet. My name is Julie Feriniers, and I am the Executive Director of the Greenwich Alliance for Education. We are the only education foundation in our town, and everything we do is to benefit Greenwich Public School students, teachers, and alumni. That's Trish looking for her phone. Anyway, first I need to mention a couple fundraisers fundraisers where we need your participation and donations. And Francis helped a little bit with that before. Today, it's not too late to make a quick donation to F C Gives to benefit our programs. This is the last giving day, so we hope to go out with extra winnings. Go right now to GreenwichAlliance.org and make a sixteen dollar donation. And for all of you who donated today between three and four, we won the power hour, so we got a thousand extra dollars. So thank you. Um, next Friday, March third, is our virtual trivia challenge. The advantage of continuing this event in a virtual format is that it allows for teams to be formed with family and friends from around the country. Last year, the gals of Gosa were our big winners. The questions are competitive, competitive, which makes for a great game. There is also a silent auction available for everyone to bid on. Even if you are not playing trivia, please sign up at GreenwichAlliance.org. As Francis also mentioned, our reaching out grants application is due on Friday, March twenty-fourth. I will be hosting Zoom calls next week on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday between three and four P M. For anyone who is interested in learning how the grant process works and what ideas are in line with our funding, the link will be sent to Dr. Jones for sharing. An example of a great grant is the New Lebanon Theater Program, which is in its second year and is championed by Carol Pugliano Martin. All students at New Lab are experiencing live theater, in-school improv and performance, declamation contest, and so much more. This is an exceptional opportunity for every student, and research demonstrates there is a strong correlation between participation in theater and academic improvement. We are excited to be partnering with the eighth grade Washington D C Committee to make this trip accessible to all eighth grade students this year and going forward. As Francis mentioned, the fundraiser will be on March eighth. Watch for links in the P T A emails. An example, Science Beyond the Classroom, a fifty-five thousand dollar grant that we funded this year for first and second graders is another example of the Alliance making sure experiential learning is available to all students in our district. Finally, our congratulations to Diane Fox and Carrie Gavin on their recent principal announced appointments. I have had the pleasure of working with both of them and know that Hamilton Avenue School and Cos Cob will benefit from their leadership. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thanks, Joe.
Greenwich Alliance does great work. Maybe some little bit will be mentioned about it later on, uh, but thank you, Julie. That was fantastic. Uh, and we have Phil Brous. Phil?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me back. Tonight, I would like to talk about finding a way to get Narcan kits and fentanyl testing strips into the hands of our high school students. As we have seen time and time again, there is a need to have these life-saving devices close to us. We need a way to be able to help our kids and families shouldn't overdose occur. Sixty percent of the overdoses happen at home. Yes, at the house you live in. So like a Band-Aid, Neosporin, Narcan kits should be in the medicine cabinets at their home where it's most needed. The high school now has them in the school, but in my opinion, they now also need to be in the homes. When you say you wouldn't like to have, when you say, wouldn't you like to have the resources available, the reaction is, well, we don't have a problem. Well, the facts, sadly speaking, we do have a problem, and having a Narcan kit available to us at a moment's notice will help save a life. Help me find a way to make these Narcan kits available to all our high school families. I would also like to find a way to get the fentanyl testing strips available to our children so they can test their own on their own for their fentanyl in the drugs they're about to take. This is the second best defense they can have to fighting this horrible drug, fentanyl. You can't see it. It's invisible, but it kills. Only a drop in a fake pill will kill. We need to give the kids a simple test kit that costs less than a dollar. Please help me make the fentanyl test chips available to our high school students. I see this as a way to a nationwide program. Let's do what's best for our kids and not hide from the facts that our kids are sadly taking the drugs. No one wants to hear or admit it, but the facts are there. We need Narcan kits and fentanyl test strips in our kids' hands, not in our minds. We will find a way to pay for them. I'll raise the money also. So please help me find a way to get these Narcan kits in everyone's medicine cabinet and the test strips in all the kids' hands. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Phil has, uh, been very instrumental in getting a lot of defibrillators around town as well. And he's starting the conversation about the test strips. Uh, and it should be dinner table conversation going forward. It's not an easy conversation to be had, but certainly needs to be talked about. Thank you, Phil. Dr. Jones, it's your turn. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Hello. Okay, here we go. So I have a couple of items tonight. Julie stole a little bit of our thunder in that I just want to make sure everyone knows that we really are celebrating and Carrie Gavin being named as the new principal, permanent principal at Cos Cob, and they are just overwhelmed with joy. And same thing for Diane Fox at Hamilton Avenue, and we just couldn't be happier. And I can't tell you how many emails from not only parents and staff members, you know, and I had been encouraging them in the fall, just letting them know that I, I don't know if I've ever received so many emails from not just parents, but the custodian, the office staff, literally everybody in those buildings, and they had to go through a full committee interview process because they were in an interim position. And I had, I was not surprised that the committee ended up recommending them. So we're just thrilled with that. Um, I also want to just mention that Representative Curry will be visiting at Western Middle School next week, and it's just coming to see, learn a little bit about Greenwich Public Schools. Um, he is Chair of the Education Committee in Hartford, and so we're really excited to be able to show off a little bit of what's happening in the district to help the Chair of the Education Committee learn what we're doing. Um, and then I want to mention that before the break, we had a fabulous event called PJ Day. Last year, we had it. It was a few schools that participated. Um, this year, uh, Jonathan Soprano, with our communications, uh, worked directly with Sophie to help get the word out. Uh, she did a fabulous job putting a website together, and this is, was in an effort to raise funds for pediatric cancer of which she experienced, you know, when she was a middle school student and talked about, you know, the amount of time that a pediatric cancer patient has to stay in their pajamas when they're in the hospital so long. Raised almost twenty thousand dollars. So just phenomenal. Um, and you know, thanks to the community for being so supportive of this wonderful event. And it just, it models everything that we really want our kids to learn about kindness, caring for others. Um, it's just the model of essence of what we want to be, and thanks to Sophie for bringing it to us. That's all for me.
Thank you. Any questions? I have one. Tony also on the visit by, is it Mr. Curry or Ms. Curry? Mr. Curry, I had spoken, uh, and I know that our local delegation was very excited about the visit, and let's make sure we reach out to all the members of our local state delegation and make sure that they, uh, they maybe can join for the visit as well, because I know they're very excited about him coming down. Hi, Michael.
Hi. Sorry I'm late. I have my son's parent teacher conference of all things. Um, um, Tony, given the, um, um, the headlines today, the, um, things have changed so much over the past ten years. The, um, I wonder if you could talk a little bit about, um, how, um, you know, how we respond to bullying and supporting students and social emotional development and things like that, given, given, given a few time.
Mike, yeah, it might be, you know, we have a anti-bullying policies, but we talked about something, you know, it wasn't part of the superintendent's report. We're supposed to direct the questions on things. I know, I, I understand.
I did talk to Tony earlier today. It's, I didn't, I'm not blindsiding.
Well, let, uh, let's, uh,
Had a whole discussion, executive session, that's why.
I'm okay with bringing up matters that we'd like to discuss, uh, with the superintendent. I will take a look and see if it stays within, uh, it's nice to let people know, and I know you did that, so that's great. So let's, let's, I'll, I'll, okay with, I'll have that discussion.
Well, we can't really have a discussion. I mean, because it's superintendent's report, but definitely, we have a new bullying policy, actually, at the policy committee, maybe a year or two ago. Uh, and it was updated very, very recently. Um, there is a regulation that goes along with that, uh, that all of our administrators follow. Uh, certain, you know, documentation that they keep. Um, often, uh, they're running that through Dr. Carabillo, uh, who also manages all of our Title Nine investigations. Um, it's not unusual for us to actually have town attorneys working with us to make sure that, um, administrators have the full support as well. You know, from a social, emotional learning standpoint, I think, you know, over the last decade, there's definitely been more of a focus and, and more so coming out of COVID now to make sure that, um, which I think I just referenced a minute ago, not just being, you know, kind as an individual, but also helping students understand self-regulation, uh, helping students understand who do they go to if they are in crisis or, you know, they're, they're exhibiting certain feelings and, you know, who are those trusted adults in the building? And as a matter of fact, I, when I was out in a building yesterday, um, you know, it was, you, you see it all over the place, making sure that every student has somebody to connect to. And I think that that's been a real effort for us. And last year, you know, we shared, which I think was the first time we had done that, um, just our data on how many risk assessments we had done. And, uh, we went down last year, which was really unusual, uh, in compared to a lot of other school districts. And I think it's a tribute to all of our staff who are trying to be very, very proactive and stay on top of these issues. Um, but along with it, I will say it's probably one of the most difficult, um, you know, things that we deal with from an administrative level within the schools.
Any more questions of the superintendent? Uh, yeah, I would like to ask if it'd be okay if we can, one of our speakers has just arrived, and I'm going to invite him up here to, uh, to speak. So David, come on up. We had our, we went quickly. We moved fast. So we went through a short number of speakers. So, uh, if we can go back in time, David's going to do a quick presentation. Thanks, Dave. Dave from the United Way. Thank you. Right here is great. Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity, Joe, and rest of the board of Ed, Tony Jones. Hello there. Good to see you again. Uh, I'm David Raven, CEO of the Greenwich United Way, and just wanted to bring something to everyone's attention that we're working with very closely with Tony on, and that's what we call our early childhood achievement gap solutions program at the Greenwich United Way. And what it is, is, and I know I have three minutes, right? So it's a, it's a two-pronged approach to narrow the achievement gap among at-risk children entering kindergarten in the Greenwich Public Schools. And the data I have now from,
Thank you.
From Tony's group, Jen Lau, et cetera, proves that the program is working, and I'll get to the program right now. So the first prong is a birth to three, uh, prong where we have two bilingual parent educators on the P A T. Everyone, anyone here of P A T, parents as teachers? Some of you educators may have, we call it G P A T, Greenwich Parents as Teachers. Nothing we invented. It's a thirty-five, forty-year-old program, I think started in St. Louis, and let's say Joe and I are those parent educators. We go into the homes of the at-risk children that we've identified that are brought to our attention and train the trainer. Who is the trainer in this case? The parents. To train that perhaps single mom or uh, low-income family. The average income, by the way, for the, on the G P A T side is about thirty-five thousand dollars a year. Okay. They go in, they train the trainer to be the best parent they can be. And one of the best, biggest advantages, I believe, of that prong or the program is that it identifies, uh, developmental disabilities way before they get to Greenwich Public Schools kindergarten. We've identified dozens of those developmental, uh, issues way already in the three years we've been running the program, uh, which is really exciting because that saves that child from having to wait till they get to kindergarten for it to be identified. Being able to mitigate it, get it fixed, get them up to speed before they get to kindergarten. So that's the first prong, really, really high-level view. The second prong is a, what we call preschool instructional coach, and that person has been inserted into the about twenty classrooms, I think, in the Greenwich all over the district, including the district preschools, Grace Daycare, and a few others, Children's Day School, and a couple of others. And that person is there to train the trainer as well. In that case, it's the trainer. In that case, it's the trainers who teach the children in the preschools, preparing them for kindergarten. So I'm, I'm really going high level here, but I do have a data slide.
30 seconds.
I do have a data slide I would love to share with you all. Or contact me for more information that we have three years worth of data, again, from Tony. And you can't really see it, but with the red bar of the children in our in our program, you can pass those down if you want. So I got a few of them. And
Um, time. So.
Thank you. Pass those down. Anyone needs more information? Reach out to me. You know how to get ahold of me. Thanks so much for the opportunity. Tony, pleasure to work with you. We're going to, we're going to help these kids as much as we can. We are narrowing the achievement gap. Thank you.
Thank you, David. It's great work United Way does with our, with our young children. It's fantastic. So thank you for that. Um, so thank you, everybody for letting us go back in time. Now we're going to go forward in time. Uh, we have the, uh, reports of officers committees and liaisons. Who would like to start with that? Christina?
Just on behalf of the GHS Entryway Committee, they are, our architects are finishing off the construction drawings. So we anticipate that our, at our March meeting, we will be voting on the final set of drawings and going into the state process to then move it along. Then hopefully we'll be relatively quick, given that we've already been in before them. Um, and that thereafter, we can take the project out to bid and stay on the timeline that we were optimistic that we could pull off this year.
That's exciting. Thank you, March, for looking at. Anybody else? Karen?
The Policy Committee met, uh, before the break and we are, are in the process of looking at um, new policies that will need to be implemented due to legislation that was, that has been recently put into place. So I would anticipate um, perhaps in March, we could do a first read on some of those policies, depending on our timing, which may be a little short, but we'll work to our, towards it. But that's the main thing on the agenda for the Policy Committee.
Kathleen?
I'll just plug again for Greenwich Alliance. You have a few hours left to donate and I can't believe it. You can use Apple Pay. So that's so easy. I mean, you, just for that, just like 20 bucks right now, Greenwich Apple Pay. And um, that and the trivia night, that's it. Everyone sign up for that. That's fun.
Anybody else? Michael?
Are we fielding a team for, the board of that team? I think so.
I'm pretty, I need to have a diverse set of, I need to know what your background is, your background specs. I'm, I, I'm, I'm in for the win.
There's an application process.
I know, I know. I haven't, I have a, uh, fair enough, fair enough. I.
I have a sports ringer at home if you need one of those.
How come nobody calls me for that stuff?
I, I don't have anyone, or maybe we need Cody for, I don't have anyone that has like, um, current cultural, pop culture. So.
I, my pop culture ends at Ace of Base. Um, I do have a report though. I, I, I do have, I do have a report. Yeah, that's all right. Um, I'm also making inside jokes of the old Greenwich Building Committee as well. Um, so Strategic Plan Committee, uh, meets tomorrow. So, uh, my fellow board members, it's not too late if you'd like to add any comments to the draft, um, board goals document. Uh, we're going to be reviewing that, um, tomorrow as part of a Strategic Plan Committee, um, meeting. Secondly, so outside of strategic plan, this is a Joe Kelly-esque report and that, um, on my own, the, uh, but I've talked to some board members about it and the administration is aware. I've had some conversations with an organization called Research Ed. Uh, Research Ed is an international organization that holds conferences around the world. Um, and it, we have the opportunity to, um, host a conference, um, next year, maybe. The, um, in the next 18 months here in, in Greenwich would be a tremendous opportunity for us. Uh, Research Ed, as you can tell from its, um, name, is all about identifying and connecting research to practice. Um, it would be an opportunity to showcase the wonderful stuff that's happening here in Greenwich and present that to an international audience as well as bringing international experts here to Greenwich. It's actually, it's great that David Raven, I don't know if he's still here. The, um, but that was one of the first things I thought about is who we could, who would present if we hosted it here. And because there, that's a perfect example of the Greenwich program rooted in data and research. Um, the, um, the conversations I had, uh, with some folks, they have visual aids, the, um, a number of, um, of pop, very popular authors have voiced an interest because of our location and Greenwich's reputation and things. So they, for example, the authors of How Teaching Happens, uh, might want to join us. The authors of NeuroTeach, all the good folks from my bookshelf and even, um, Tom Sherrington, who is a very popular blogger, the teacher head blogger, um, could, uh, all, all voice interest in coming as well as um, a number of other authors. So it could really be an exciting things, very much in the preliminary stages. Obviously we'd have to have a large community output and a committee and things like that. But, uh, it's only something worth, worth talking about the, um, because there's a lot of, it'd be great for us.
That sounds very exciting. What sort of size do you think the conference would be aware of a, a previous conference was?
So it's, 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 it's within means. It's not a, it's not a huge conference. It would fit within, it would be hosted. It could fit within the auditorium of Greenwich High School and breakout room. So we're not talking about, though it's the research edge model is they want, um, vast in scope, but intimate in size. Um, so you bring these acclaimed authors and everyone else, um, and it's not no cost to anybody. Um, and presenters and things to showcase, but it's a meeting of the minds. So as a result, it's very much about keeping things small and intimate.
I'm, I'm happy to support that, uh, in any way, uh, when you need to put the teams together to work on stuff, because I think that's great. We'll incorporate the first selectman's office and everybody as far as bringing people to our community for a positive cause is just great. So thank you for that. That's great work. Anybody else? Karen?
Uh, well, in addition to meeting with Policy Governance Committee tomorrow, Mike and I are also going to be meeting, uh, with, uh, with CAC to, to sit down and, and have a discussion with them on, uh, on where things are with the audit and what they're up to. I know we've, they, you know, they have a meeting, but we're going to have a brown bag, uh, meeting with them and, uh, we'll bring some more information back to you guys on that. So want to share that as well.
Why? Thank you, Karen. That sounds great. Anybody else? I'll conclude if there's nobody else with a comment. Oh, tomorrow morning, we, at 7:45, we have our JC Building Committee meeting. Uh, we've now broken out the architects', uh, costs per project because we're phasing the work we're doing there. Uh, so we're going to take a look at that and talk about that. And, uh, uh, we are, uh, cooking with gasoline uh, when it comes to the JC Building Committee. So it's, uh, we're excited about that. We'll see, we'll get stuff done. Hopefully, uh, uh, starting, uh, starting in the summer. So. And that's it. Nobody else? Okay. Well, that brings us to our first discussion item, the Old Greenwich Building Committee Funding Schedule. Now, Michael, would you like to say a few words about that, then introduce your, your speakers?
So the, the chairman of the, of the Building Committee, um, old, of, of Old Greenwich is here, James Waters, and I'll turn everything up here. What we did, we wanted to bring to the board as a discussion item is an update on, um, current, um, on three different funding options that, um, the community is, uh, is facing here when it goes to, when it's considered the renovation of, of the Old Greenwich School. So, uh, this is a, this is a, the document speaks for itself, but it's a very, it lays out the facts here and also, um, attached to it. You'll see, uh, um, this different schedules as for how we get to the current numbers. So you'll recall that we have that $24 million number for the Old Greenwich renovation. That was a 2020 number. Um, we have some new research on that. We also know that, uh, before the town right now is the decision is one of three options. One is to, uh, fully fund the project now, um, to fund, um, about a million dollars, which we, the building committee feels is what would be necessary to continue the, their work next year, continue the work of the architecture. Um, or delay, um, all funding till the subsequent year. So those are pretty much the three options. James could talk about it in more detail than, and expertise than I can. But we thought it was important to, uh, bring it to the board, uh, to have your, to, to make sure you're aware of all the numbers that we're looking at. Uh, because the numbers are, the, the, the options have been moving around and obviously this is a, um, of an important topic to the community. So with that, I'll excuse James.
Okay. So good evening, everybody. Um, thanks for letting me come. Um, so as you guys know, the Old Greenwich Building Committee, we're, we've been moving quick. If you want to come up at 7:00 AM on a Tuesday morning, you're welcome. We've, we, we have a gang who they do it every week and they've been doing it every week for four months. Um, okay. Um, I'm not going to step through everything that's in the packet. You know, we provided it in advance. Um, it, it took a lot of time to put it together, a lot of thought, a lot of facts. Um, what I would just say for you is what we put together, it's simple math. It's, it's, it's simple mass, math. There, we understand the scope of the Old Greenwich School project in the ad specs that this board approved October 2021. There, there's six big items in the ad specs. ADA compliance, single secure entryway, resolving flooding sewage issue. Building wide sprinkler system, so we meet the fire code. Building wide HVAC to meet health and safety standards. Replacing four classrooms that are going to be lost because of the ADA entryway and flooding. Um, the numbers we provided have been vetted with our architect and our owners rep. And were unanimously approved by the building committee. Um, we felt it was important to be transparent with you and with the town about the estimated project costs. Um, the bottom line is we've been using bad numbers. $24.5 million is not a real figure today. Um, here's a simple explanation um, for those numbers. So when these ad specs were done, there was a feasibility study. You may, I know some of you were part of that in 2020. Uh, uh, the ad specs were approved in the fall of 2021. Um, in conjunction with the feasibility study, they created, you know, obviously the, the work with the feasibility committee um, to determine the scope of work. I know that was really rigorously, uh, challenged so that we would do the things that only that we absolutely must need to do. Um, and then, um, the, uh, then the architect who helped put that together escalated the costs through 2024, assuming uh, the project would start in 2024, which I believe at the, was the plan at that time. Here's the, the problem is the assumptions. So the assumptions that were baked in were 3% cost escalations from 2020 to 2024. A 10% contingency. And an 18% allowance for the soft cost. You, you can go and read the ad specs. It's on that same page with those numbers. It's the smaller print. So a lot of people didn't pay attention. I, we dug into it. Um, what we found is this, the allowance for soft cost is fair. 18%, it's standard. I hear it every, everybody that I talked to. But the cost escalations and contingency aren't realistic. On the cost escalations, reality saw 10% escalation in 2021. 15% in 2022. 12% in 2023. And now they're expecting 8% into 2024. Much greater than 3% annually. As to the contingency, the rule of thumb that I keep hearing from everybody is 10% for new construction, 20% for renovations. You guys all know Old Greenwich School is 121 years old. Um, so what we did is simple math. We backed out what we believed were unrealistic assumption escalations. We applied the, what actually happened. We applied a 20% contingency and we applied an 18% allowance for soft costs. It's math. So what this shows is that the OGS renovation is estimated to cost 35.9 million if we start in 2024. If we start the year after that, as the first selectman recommended, it would cost 38 million. And if we start, uh, in 2026, it will cost 40.8 million. That's just putting at cost escalations on it. Same methodology. And what this shows, I think, for this board is every year that we delay the OGS project, it is going to cost the town an extra $2 million plus. So I'll tell you that, um, you know, we anticipate having professional estimates in place in the May-June timeframe. And at which point we're going to have a much more detailed estimate on project costs. The building committee, I'll also tell you the building committee is very focused on an integrated design to solve multiple challenges at the same time. And hopefully that will save us some money, um, while addressing the ad specs. I think we, I think there's a shot, but I'm not going to over promise and under deliver on that. So look, um, I think we all know the Old Greenwich community, um, and, and the broader public school community is certainly behind moving this project forward. I mean, all you have to do is look at the reaction, um, in the last couple of weeks. I also wanted to tell you that we're going to send out an update early next week to broadly communicate with the community that will include an update on these numbers. Um, we think that's important. It's important to be transparent with the public. Don't love to tell you this kind of news, but the, them's the facts. Um, so I, I have other things I could say, but I will, I will save them. I don't understand exactly the format here if I speak and then I'm, and then I'm booted out. Okay. Yep. All right. So I'll save anything else.
What I'm going to do is change the way we usually do this. I'd like to give it a try because I think it's more effective. I'm going to pass my powers as board chair over to, uh, Michael, uh, and you'll run the questions and run the session. Well, you can redirect it to who you wish. And, uh, in my absence, it goes to the vice chair, but I can redirect the, uh, the powers temporarily to a fellow board member. Uh, so in, in this case, you'll be running the question and answering, uh, of the session because I think it'll be more efficient. And please, if you could say one round of thank yous to James and make it just once from you and everyone else, we all appreciate the work you do. But James would like to go home at one point as the rest of us. So thank you.
Yeah, fair. So, so, yeah. So let me say on, on behalf of the committee, the, um, we have an exceptionally hardworking committee, but there's no question that, uh, James is, uh, putting, it's worth saying publicly, puts in a extraordinary amount of work and time and effort into, into this, the amount of work that the committee has done in the, in the miniscule amount of time is, is remarkable. Um, to that end, Ms. Costin, I see you have a question.
I don't know. I don't know that it's so much a question. Um, but you guys were cut in your, uh, the funds that you have right now were cut by the BET. We had by the first selectman and then voted by the, no, no, the, the first appropriation, the 1 million that they have now was a reduction from the 1.5 that we had recommended and asked for. So I believe you're undercapitalized to, at, at the very start.
Yeah.
And now, um, I believe that, you know, our town process is somewhat broken a bit because you are now forced, you've been forced to use stale estimates. And now, and now, um, you know, we have already unanimously expressed our support and our vote for funding. Um, so I just hope that if the option exists for the BET to properly fund your project at a realistic price um, for this, for this project, that it, it would proceed. And I, I don't have a question. I just want to express my support. And, um, and I hope you get the funding you need so that the project can proceed.
Can I say one thing? So we, we, just very quickly, um, the one thing I would just say is, um, on that, the final page of the attachment that was sent in the bottom left, you will see that and this is a cash flow that we did to justify the 1.1 million that we're asking for if, if construction funding is not provided this year. Um, you'll see on the bottom left that, that exact sequence of events. So, you know, the first, the superintendent proposed 1.8 million of A&E funding in November 2021. This board approved 1.5 million in January 2022. And the BET approved 1 million, um, in April 2022. And if you do the math on what we, on this spreadsheet, it actually shows that what the superintendent proposed is pretty much right on the money. We just believe there should be a little bit of contingency because we're going to need to be looking into walls and underground and who the heck knows what that's going to say further work we need to do. Um, so I just want to flag that.
Hello. Um, quick, quick, quick question. I'm just, and then I have a couple of comments. The state reimbursement you guys have at 13%, I think? James, because I think it's 20 usually for renovations and I know, like we talked, I know only certain costs are eligible, but if, kind of how did you come to the 13% number?
Yeah, it's a good question, yes, yes, renovations start at 20. What we're, it, it's a little bit, I'm trying to be conservative here. But what we're hearing from architects who bid on our, our job and the ones we selected is that. It's not going to be super likely, we're going to be at 20%, you know, they, they believe there's going to be some decrement taken out there. Just like, you know, for a new construction, yeah, you start at 10%, but something will, could, will likely get taken out, it, it's up to us though to try and do as best a job as we can.
Excellent, thank you, okay, here's my, my thinking on this and I'd love you to talk through option one because, you know, I, I have real reservations about. How the first selectmen and the BET are approaching this, I think this project is a real priority, I think everybody agrees that and. Can you just talk us through where you anticipate your committee being come, you know, the BET vote at the beginning of April, the RTM vote in May. Not to pit projects against each other, but you guys are pretty far down the runway and it's really impressive the speed with which you're operating, so if you could just kind of talk us through. Where your processes are going to be for those timelines.
Yeah, sure, thank you. So. I, I think we're about a month and a half behind the central building committee, they just hired, I believe their CMR. We just put our proposal live today for that, so we got a lot some time, but we're, we're, we're about a month and a half behind. We are in, we are starting schematic design. Imminently. The plan is, again, I'll just point you to that fifth page where we, we are, we've, we've worked this through with our owners rep, a, a great firm called Morganti. And with architects, SPNA. And. We're going to have most of the schematic design work done in May, so we can get it, s, get estimates. Done on that and be ready for state submission, so. We, the, the, really, the only things missing for the state submission. You know, i, i, is really going to be funding at that point, if, you know, unless option one is, is pursued. And then, you know, we've got six months allotted for design development, land, local land use approvals, you know, we'll also be doing some interface with the public, we're talking about that tomorrow. And, you know, you'll see into the new year, we'll have construction documents starting. If we. Were, were funded, we will be ready to, the priority list comes out in December. And we'll be ready to, you know, as soon as it's, if we're on that list, we'll be ready to go out to bid. So. You know, Blaze has been pressuring me. You know, are you ready to do this? And I have told them, we're going to be ready, so, you know, I mean, that's.
So just to confirm, you, you feel that the committee, even, you know, the month and a half or whatever behind, you guys will be ready to go for the June submission date and then a construction six months later. With assuming, you know, I, I, I think the scope of this project is relatively discreet, as you were saying, the six main areas and we're dealing with an existing footprint for the most part. So. It's, it's an easier, I'm gonna put that in quotes, project than, yeah, I renovated a house, it's not even necessarily easier. But there, there are fewer decisions to be made. By your committee than by Central in terms of, because you don't have to cite the building and, and things like that and. Do you need, does the project need MI status? Do we know?
I, I believe we do.
Just to understand, yeah, but that could be going on while the state requirement.
Exactly, that's, that's the, the plan is to use the back half of the year for the local land use, we've got Peter Lowe. Who's on the PZ, who's on our building committee. And, you know, others, you know, going to help shepherd us, but the bottom line is option one. We anticipate. If all of that played out, we could be shovels in the ground, ready to go, spring, summer, next year.
Thank you, someone else can go.
Ms. Still.
So, James, this is very impressive, thanks for this detail, not that I'm surprised from you. I think it's, it's, there aren't many questions to ask because it's so well put. I think I just want to sort of reemphasize what Christina said, this was an 8-0 vote by our board, which doesn't happen all the time, Joe points out. For us to put forth this capital, because I think we all recognize how important both Central and Old Greenwich, you know, both buildings are, I know that the selectman probably has to make some. Decisions, but I feel it's our fiduciary responsibility to advocate for our schools and to me, when we approved these ed, ed specs, you know, more than two years ago now. And we hear from these parents what is happening at Old Greenwich School in terms of sewage and things like that, I just can't get in good conscience, push this any further. So I continue to be all in on option one, thank you for bringing this to us.
I was also going to just say thank you for this document, I have to tell you, it was so clear, concise, well thought out and detailed. I don't have any questions and for someone who's a layperson like myself to go review through this and. Get it with a little, you know, a little light bulb goes, aha, it's great. And I, I will also add support for saying, I, you know, I, I understand we have to all make decisions here, but this was decided so many, so many years back by us, but. We've also been, as a reminder, been cited for ADA, lack of ADA compliance in this school, which is. Just as horrendous to me as the thought of sewage in classrooms and, and the other things, so to me, it, it's pushing it off and adding funding to the. Adding to the cost does not seem like the most fiscally responsible thing to do either, just, just saying so. But thank you for this document, anybody that hasn't seen it is posted and it's really well thought out and, and written.
Can, one, one thing I just want to remind this, this board about, you got, you guys make tough decisions and, and, and we're probably there when this was, you know, decided, but this OCR complaint. And its resolution in 2021, like, it's a big deal, right? I mean. We've signed up to do something and part of that to do something was, we said we were going to renovate this school. We said it was at that time anticipated for 2023, I believe. And, you know, what this require, what it does is, is as soon as we have schematic design done, we are required to submit that to the OCR for review. That, they're not going to accept it if we just say, oh yeah, we slapped an elevator in there. No, that's not that. What's that? It was, oh, Office of Civil Rights, US, US Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights. So we are required to submit the schematic design with an art, you know, produced by an architect who understands ADA. And. We have to provide, you know, it has to be certified by them and then Office of Civil Rights has to sign off on it, right? So, that's my understanding, I'm happy to be told I'm wrong, but, yeah, I, I think we need to get this done.
Thank you, Mike. I loathe kicking the can down the road on any of our building projects, we have many that we need to, to address. And I, I think as a board, we've been addressing them aggressively and I, I just hate having to delay. But if, and there's only so much money available at any given year, that taken into consideration. We have, we'll go over the two scenarios if we can, the, the 1.1 million that you're asking, which could be assisting the project if there is a delay. For whatever reason, certainly not driven by us, and what would happen if that 1.1 funding was unavailable?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so that, again, I'll point you to the fifth page of what we produced. Which is, is effectively the option two that keeps us afloat. And I think that answers both of your questions. So, what the 1.1 million will enable us to do is to complete pre-construction on this project, it, we will not be able to submit to the state with that. But we will be able to complete pre-construction. You know. By a year from now, so we will be, we'll have a project ready to go, construction documents done, you know. Just ready to submit to the state if, in the hopes that we got construction funding next year. That would then start a June submission in 2024. We would hear in December 2024. We would then go out to bid in Ju, January 2025. And, you know, we would start spring, summer 2025, so that, that the 1.1. Does kick the project, construction start a full year from spring, summer 2024 to spring, summer 2025. So, but, but it does enable us to complete pre-construction. Now, if we got zero. In A&E funding. In, in the coming, upcoming year's budget. We will run out of cash at the end of October. The, the. The numbers here, you know, show that, you know, basically we will run out of money in the middle of design development phase. And that's just paying our architect and paying like the surveyors and paying the owners rep and paying the, the construction manager, right? These are. Reasonable things you have to do if you're going to do construction projects, so we will run out of, of funding. And, you know, that we'll just have to tell the project team, stop working, we can't pay you. And we'll come, we'll call you again when we have some money.
Thank you.
So there. There, there are a couple of. Trial balloons, not trial balloons, but things to, to also float out there and, and make, make sure we're, we're all aware of the. When you think about different possibilities and how this could unfurl, so consider option two, the 1.1 million. You know, it would be unprecedented in the funding of the town, but it certainly doesn't mean that it wouldn't, an interim could be a possibility there as far as. Moving the project along if we had those kind of things in place, so outside of the budget cycle, it's never happened before, but it's not something possible. The other thing to think about. Is that when we get into these larger numbers. Like 35, 40 million, they, and it probably becomes a legitimate question at that point of whether this is an appropriate project. Or if we have built new buildings for, for probably not 40 million, but certainly not, not, you know, not, not multiples of that. So, so that when, as these numbers get bigger. The appropriateness of this project might become some, might be a conversation for a future board.
Do you want me to say something on that? Okay, so. Obviously, I'm an RTM member, so I, I know how the RTM receives the notion of interims. So I would hope we, since we are providing this information and, and a vetted fashion in budget season, that it would be part of the budget if this is a priority. But I take your points taken. What I would just say is the building committee is pursuing the ad specs, you guys know that's our mandate. You know, I think it is the, we think it's the bare minimum of what must be done to Old Greenwich. But it's going to resolve the most pressing challenges. You know. I would say if this board. Decided that it wanted to revise the ad specs to explore a new construction building. You know, we're, we're willing to discuss that with you. And, you know, I, I, I don't think you should assume there's going to be a whole lot of savings. In fact, it's, you know, based on what we're hearing in the market and talking to our, our professionals, is you're likely talking about double the cost of what, the 35, you're probably talking double that. Plus, depending when you start.
To the point of a new building, I think the community has no desire for a new building, I think there's a lot of character at the Old Greenwich School, I think people really love. The building, Jen Ben's like in there going, yep, 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 it's one of the hallmarks of the Old Greenwich community, so I think. You know, and, and to James's point, like, it's not going to be less expensive to build a new building, so in terms of the town's appetite for it, I would say that's not an issue. What, what my, my grave concern is at the moment is, I feel that this project is moving along at a pace and with all due respect to Central Middle School. I'm not concerned, I'm concerned that this is really better positioned for a June application to the state and readiness more than Central, only the scale of the project. And I know we talked about this when we were having our budget discussions. And I think we as a board should be. Thinking, I know it's not on for an action tonight, but maybe it needs to be an action item at our next meeting or, you know, or conversation with the BET, but. This building is a priority, everybody agrees it's a priority, everybody agrees the scope of the work is appropriate. It's not too much, it remedies the problems that we have, so I, there is consensus on this and it's simply about the money. So I think it is our role as the Board of Ed and what we want and what we have voted for to advocate for that, and if we believe. That we really think this project needs to move forward next year, I think we need to find a way to send a message to the BET and the first selectman's office. Again, I don't like to play projects off each other, but I think we should be thinking about this. The BET doesn't vote on their final budget until April 4th. I think that gives a little bit of time for both projects to see where they are in six weeks, but. To me. I think this really, you know, I'm really troubled at the concept of even pushing this back a year.
So Christina, I just want to understand. The, your comments and the, and the point, are you saying? Are you saying that both schools should be? Up for. Vote for the BET to push them both forward, or are you saying that you think? Old Greenwich is in a better position to put forward? Thinking that only one school is getting done up, up this year, that we should as a board collectively decide which school we think should be the priority? And given the status of where they're both at and. Vocalize that to both the BET and the RTM that we think it's Old Greenwich and not CMS.
I think they're both priorities, we voted 8-0 that they're both priorities, now we're in logistics mode, right? And so that's the part of it that has me concerned, that this, the logistics on Old Greenwich feel very. Far down the runway in a very short amount of time and. Not knowing that the first selectman was going to make the choice that he did, you know, we didn't know that, but I, I just, I have a lot of trouble with. Any kind of agreeing on our part that this project get pushed back a year, I know we're not the funding source, but I don't know if there's a way to show it, you know. In some way, in conversations, or it'll probably be in the paper tomorrow, that, yeah, this is a priority item for the board and I think, and I don't think there's any dispute over it, I know we've had disputes over other projects in the past about the scope and the scale. I don't think that exists now amongst us and frankly, I'm not sure amongst the BET and the first selectman's office that no one's disagreeing about it, it's just about the money. And that's very frustrating, so. You know, you could make an argument that we wait six more weeks till the BET and see where the projects are, you know, I don't know, I'm not on the BET, thank goodness, so anyway. So I, I'm just, I'm, I'm voicing my concerns.
So, look, I don't, I don't disagree with you and I, I know how we ended up voting and. I do have, I mean, obviously I want to hear what Laura has to say, because I know she's antsy and keeps raising her hand, but I do, I want to hear what she has to say in regards to the progress of CMS. As I said, when we voted. Back in December on this, I had concerns that. I, I didn't want to pit one school against the other, but I had concerns that if one school went, right, which is why we agreed to put both in the budget and to see what ended up happening. Because we didn't have enough information at the time. Was because I didn't want one school to go and then not be ready and therefore it's delayed and then the other school. Unfortunately, is also further delayed because of the progress that's being made and I do think that we need to be in a position to put whatever school is best. Positioned to move forward and get done, then we should do that and we've agreed that both projects are a priority, I think there's. Still debate going on about the scope of CMS outside the scope of, of this board, but. I don't, I agree with you, I don't think that there is an issue with the scope with Old Greenwich, which makes it. A more logical decision as to what is well more better positioned to move forward, but I do want to hear what Laura has to say about the CMS committee and maybe. I know that that's an agenda item going forward, but maybe now's the right time to have that commentary.
So, I will respectfully disagree with Ms. Downey, the CMS building committee is very far along. We just hired a construction manager at risk, we are holding a community forum. So that the community can see the progress that we have made, that will be March 8th. It will have our. our site laid out for the community. You know, these are are
Point of order.
Yes.
Sorry. Point of order. Thank you. This would be a great way to segue. We finished with the finished with the Old Greenwich discussion. Can we go right into the Central Middle School discussion? Because you already took, okay, well, so you hold the power now and give it back to me when you're done.
The last word.
It's not, it's not the last word. I just had a quick question because one of the things we didn't discuss is if we push, if this gets pushed off a year, two years, whatever that might be. Within the OCR complaint, I know that there were stipulations on on timing. You said, you know, once we have certain documents, it needs to be so. What there weren't, what happens if we delay? It's just our best effort. Is our best effort really pushing it off? I'm just wondering.
My understanding is that that's correct, that there isn't, I don't believe we've signed up for a date. We just provided, we said we were anticipating to it. And I think we said anticipating in twenty twenty three, but we're not, we didn't sign up to a timeline.
Okay, that was what I was gonna say, because like, what, how does that? How does that play into it? So thank you for answering that. I thought there was a timing involved.
Can I, can I, one final thing, if we're gonna start moving off? I would just say we we have raised to this board's attention that we've heard questions about breaking this project up into smaller projects and discussed it in our building committee and with our project team. Here's what we found. Bottom line, this will exponentially increase the costs, perhaps by fifty percent or more. As we spend money on duplicate projects, architects, lawyers, startup, close down a contractors, et cetera. So, you know, I said, that means rather than thirty five, you might end up spending fifty plus. I specifically asked that of our project team today, and they said that would not be an efficient use of taxpayer dollars. So I I know our building committee is unanimous that this would be a costly mistake. And would also, we we believe it would likely also jeopardize perhaps completely any state reimbursement. So just wanted to flag that for you.
Thank you. So is the BET aware of these revised number figures, James?
They they will be shortly. We we wanted to wait to discuss it with you first because it's your ad specs, so and get your, any feedback you have.
Okay, I appreciate that. I mean, I think just in my own conclusion. There is the the can has been kicked down the road for many projects for a long time, and that's why we're always put in this difficult situation. But I am personally done with Central Middle School and Old Greenwich being pushed further. The selectman made his decision. He also prioritized other things as a result, and that's completely his choice. You know, I'm sure there's a park or, you know, some things along those lines. And that's his choice, but I'm on the Board of Education because I believe these two schools need to be funded now. And I am not wavering on that. So I just, and I think Central and OG need to be done now, and the building committees are ready and they're doing their work and you guys are getting up at seven in the morning. And I'm all in. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, I will yield the chair back to Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. I love all our building committee children equally. So that being said, now we've talked about all Greenwich and James. Thank you very much. That was great, powerful as usual. So thank you. And right to the point. So Laura, on that same note, I know you're working with Tony on this one, but I'm going to yield the chair powers to you to run this conversation if you are willing to accept that. Are you willing to accept that?
I, yes, sure.
Thank you.
So just as an update on where we are and and Dr. Jones can also interject whenever she likes. The CMS Committee meets every week. We've been meeting for months and months. And we are going to be holding a community forum here so that all stakeholders will have a chance to see where we are in our process. That will be on the eighth. And there'll be our preliminary preliminary site layouts, some the result of some of the visioning sessions that have been held with the educators will be presented in the form of some preliminary layouts of the of the building. And so we are really moving quickly. We have all our professionals onboard. We are hoping as the design process progresses, we will have firm pricing and and we will be able to refine our cost estimates within the next month or so. Any questions?
What time is the March eighth session? Is it during the day? Is it in the evening?
Seven thirty to eight thirty.
Thank you.
It will be in the District Digest tomorrow. Or the Friday email from from the district. The District Digest already went out, so. Oh, also, I'm getting text from some building committee members to let you all know that the traffic study is also forthcoming. The the work is beginning on our traffic study.
With respect to the traffic study, is that based upon where we think the schematics will be for the new layout for where the school will be? Or what's the purpose of the traffic study?
So the I think it's part of, it's part of what the architect would do normally. They are going to be looking at the pressure points around the site. And that will be able to inform how we can improve the site flow. We're trying to take as many cars off of Indian Rock as we can and improve the bus and parent loops so that traffic is diverted from the from the street. If you've been to the pickup and drop off, you know how people line up sometimes double on Indian Rock. So we want to be able to maximize the site so that traffic is improved for pickup and drop off and and children's safety.
Isn't that difficult to do if you don't know where the school's going to be situated on the property?
So if you've been attending our design review committee meetings at four o'clock on Wednesdays, you would see that the building is placed on the field. And we are now looking at the most efficient way to move cars with that in mind.
When you guys give your presentation, seeing as how the building is now going to be situated on the fields, which we as a board had already, we know we need to replace anyway. The question would be to discuss the cost, if it's going to cost more to have the fields moved versus staying, I'm just wondering.
The field.
If you're placing the building on the field, then this comes down, you have to put a field here.
Yes, right where this building is.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, that's if you've been attending our four o'clock meetings on Wednesdays, you would know that the building will be raised and the fields will be where we are sitting.
Yeah, I got that. The question was if it caught would cost more to rebuild a field here versus fixing, that's all.
If the building is on the field, we can't have the fields.
No, but yes.
Have this discussion later.
The the cost, the the cost of what we've currently budgeted for with respect to the building just includes the building. It doesn't include the addition of the fields.
It does. In in the fiscal year twenty six, I believe, there's two point six million for the fields to be.
But it's in the out years. But what I'm saying is
Not part of the
It's not
Part of the request, but it's, if you look, it's like two years post, because post completion of the building. If you look at our five-year capital plan, it's in there.
Right. But what I'm saying is the current amount of money that's allocated for the CMS building doesn't do anything for the fields. There's an additional cost associated with the fields. And I think that's what Ms. Hirsch was getting at.
Yes, so the the fields that as we know them now will be part of where the construction lay down happens for the equipment, for the supplies, for the trucks. That will be you know, fenced off and safe. And then when we are done with the construction, this building will be raised once the children are moved. And it will become, there will be some part of the fields that will be fields, but probably not if you're looking at the traffic loops. And so that hasn't really been finalized. We're in the preliminary stage of the site layout, but the fields would be under our current draft where we are sitting.
Ms. Temporary Chairperson, if you could, you had just heard some discussions about the Old Greenwich Building Committee status and where they are. And you are, because you go to those four o'clock meetings that you just described, that you know where the building committee is with CMS. I'd like to hear your opinion on what you just heard about OG and where you guys think you are with CMS.
Well, I would certainly like both projects to be able to move forward. That's where I and I I heard where they are. I know where we are, and I don't think that there's any reason why we couldn't move forward together. Except for the money. Sorry, Mr. Mercantian, Dr. Mercantian.
Thank you, Miss Goss. So where is the, do we have a sense of? Do we, we have a sense of any hardening sense of the number, the actual cost of the building at this point? Because I know.
So once we have a design, we can.
So where's, so right on the pricing, so on the schedule, where where is that?
I think we'll have a design to price within the next month and a half.
Okay, so probably not before budget day.
We might. It'll be close. End of March is what I'm told for pricing.
Hearing no more questions, you could return my powers to me now.
I do like them.
Thank you.
They are returned.
All right, with no more questions on Central Middle School, we will go to an update on Western Middle School Soil Update, Dr. Jones.
Sure. We are staying on track with where we had shared before with Western Middle School. Following the same format with AECOM and Langen, AECOM and Langen, where they are prequal, they're getting ready to do the prequalification for those who will then bid on the project. Right now, purchasing legal and the team have the letter from the buyer ready to go. The invitation, the application, it's all been drafted. That should go out early next week for prequalification. And so we're on schedule to be able to, you know, get the project bid out.
Do we have any questions? Yes, Christina.
So just confirming in terms of the approval process, I'm kind of looking here. Are we we're moving ahead with our prequalification of bidders and going out to bid. Is there any other? Like, I know we put in the plan, we had the public, like, do we have, like, is there a rubber stamp or the like that we're waiting for? Or or does it wait the end of the bidding process?
It it's coming. They've assured us verbally that it should not be an issue for us to be able to move forward and stay on our schedule as planned.
Thank you.
Karen.
Just one comment, since we're discussing fields, I'm jumping back to Central and the field. I would just hope that we have the field ready to go at Western before we remove a field here, being down two fields for two middle schools. I mean, I know this one's a joyous mud pit, but on some days I I don't know how our schools and our educational program would handle the lack of two middle schools with no fields. So I just, you know, as long as we're keeping on track and keeping the timing going for Western. I just, I worry about losing a second field. That's my only, you know, thought as to what we do.
Michael.
So as of right now, right, we are, we are on track to put shovel in the ground in July. Is that, is that fair to say?
I don't want to overstate, we're trying to stay on the schedule.
But but right now.
So let's say nobody bids and isn't interested in the project or the railroad cars cannot take the dirt out, which we had to deal with that issue on the high school plan. There are still many, many curves that can be thrown in our way. And so I don't want to overcommit, but we are definitely doing our best to stay on schedule to get the project done. As far as the timing that has to come, once we actually get everything worked out and we know you know, what that work's going to look like, how we can get on and off the property, what can be done in the summer, what can be done during the school year, all that still needs to be ironed out. And Karen, to your point, you know, losing a field, it could happen. I mean, we know that that's not ideal. The only good thing would be the high school would be that would be back open. So but it it would be complex. We would just have to work with our middle schools carefully to to figure it out.
So as long as we focus on having that kind of contingency plan, because even with the lack of fields at the high school, they're they're struggling with the fields being having been closed the way, I won't say struggling, but it it has affected how the programs are being run after school there and so forth. So it would be more pressure on those fields. So just want to make sure we think about that in advance.
Karen.
So just a couple of questions. The the estimate on, let's say, if shovel goes into the ground in July, this is just an estimate that December of twenty twenty three, that there's no expectation of how long this will actually take to do at this point in time, do we?
Until we actually get all those details worked out with the people that are going to be doing the work and how we're going to get on and off the property, you know, if you have to go through the neighborhood, it's very different than if we can come in the back of the building. So we've got to work all of all of those details out. You know, even coming in the back of the building, if you're, if we're working in the fall, which is highly likely, we have to route some busing because we have an awful lot of kids who live behind Western that actually walk right through kind of that backfield area to get to school. So we're working on all those issues right now.
Okay. And then my other question is, from a timing and money perspective, if we're putting out bids for I guess in April and May and we're finishing the contracting process, would we have to go for an interim cost to or an interim to the BET that would then have to be approved by the RTM at that point in time? Or do we have enough funds because we have allotted eight million to get us through, say, the summer period because they don't, they don't have the RTM schedule off the top of my head, but I don't think they meet during the summertime. So the question is, do we have enough, do we anticipate having enough funds to get us through to keep us going? So the project doesn't stop and then we can go to an in for an interim later at a point in time.
That's correct. If we needed an interim, we have time to do that in the fall.
But there's money in the fiscal year twenty four budget of another eight or ten million, you know, kind of, we have eight, right? Correct now. And there's another eight already budget or ten, the first selectman put ten million in.
So we have a total of eighteen million ready to go for this. Okay.
Seeing no more questions, I will conclude with, I am optimistic first time since I've been serving on the Board of Education, that Western Middle School, the problem we have with the fields will be resolved. I am optimistic. So thank you for the work done. For the report, I should say, and the work. No more on Western. So now Blaze. I believe you're remote. Let's go over the financial report.
Chair Kelly and everybody, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Good evening. So yeah, the financial report is before you. And just a quick note, we we keep my team, we keep trying to make this report a little more transparent and also a couple of the sub pages in here a little easier to read. You'll notice a change in our capital reporting to match how we reported it to the BET Budget Committee on Open Capital. It's, I think, a little bit easier of a view to read. We also cleaned out a bunch of the accounts that were in there that had zero dollars and were completed by Dan's team. So that it should be a lot easier to look at, very open to feedback if people have other suggestions. I've gotten a few comments about some feedback on how to read this. So this is for you. So any feedback, please let me know. The report, so you'll see just a few quick things, other than I won't regurgitate the whole thing to you. On revenue, everything is on track right now. Just wanted to point out that preschool tuition revenue was is stronger than budgeted and also Medicaid is on pace. And also Medicaid is on pace with budgeted revenue, but it's exceeding prior year's actuals by pretty significantly. And that's thanks to the work of Dr. H on getting a lot of that Medicaid qualified expenses actually reimbursed. Medicaid is also for compuclaim, the service that we use to file that. That's something that we're allowed to draw down on that revenue to cover that expense. So that's important that we're getting that back and we're drawing that down as we speak. On expenditures, we are, you know, running relatively okay. There's a couple of areas where it's starting to get a little bit of concern, but we're still watching things very closely. The drivers are all the ones that are, you would expect at this point in the year. The substitute, the day substitute budget is now fully spent. The electricity is overspent right now, special ed's overspent, and facilities overtime's overspent. Luckily, we have the ARP funds for the facilities overtime as well as the substitute budget. So we're in the process of the transfer right now to cover those areas. We also should be, you know, fortunately, Anne's on here and her team with Almar Transportation. They've been working hard to kind of reduce our transportation costs through some penalties based on what had happened earlier in the year. And so that's going to provide some budgetary relief to us. Capital, you can see that we've had another change, 1.9 million month over month. We're doing an extensive work with, you know, a big thank you to Dan's team and my team on how much we're doing on capital review right now. Grants, we're also doing a lot of work right now with Dr. Jones. We have a full team together. We're trying to get all of our grants in really good shape. We do have 1.9 million dollars right now that are open, that will expire at the end of the fiscal year. A big bulk of that is because of, we pay a lot of payroll and that draws down. We're about halfway through the year, so part of that makes sense. And we're reaching out to those grant managers to make sure that that gets spent. School Lunch Fund is very healthy right now. We were getting ready to run probably a three to $400,000 deficit with the returning to people, students having to pay. But with the extension for the rest of the school year, we should be in, in good shape. And then the cash in lieu of commodities, we got some more information from this and it's going to be a lot higher than expected. That's a federal program and it's based on participation rate, so it's, it's already exceeded the budgeted revenue. So that's, that's great. That, that's the highlights of the report. If anyone has any questions, I'll take them now.
Questions. Michael, we'll start with you.
Is the, the increase in preschool tuition, is that, Dr. Jones, I think it might be, is that because did we open another section? Is that why that revenue increased over budget?
Can you tell me what page you're looking at?
Just the, the revenue, when we, we have, we have increased preschool tuition, then we, did it, did we have to open up another new, new sections this, this spring, this winter?
We are opening another section right now. Yes.
And also remember that when we're budgeting here, but we also, we budgeted, you put this together back in 2021, you know, early fall of 2021. And so also over the school year, you increased at a higher rate than was expected. And it's fully, you have full participation in, in preschool.
We're able to do that, we're able to expand within the budget, but we got extra revenue as a result of that. Is that fair to say?
That is correct, and we, we added last spring a section due to numbers as well.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay. And Medicaid, I wasn't aware of that Blaze, Medicaid, we get that, that comes back to us directly, the reimbursement?
That piece of the Medicaid, we, we can, we're allowed through a town resolution to draw down the dollar amount equivalent to what we spent. And that would be the compuclaim software and the processing fee. That's about 30,000 to $40,000. And then half of the salary of the person that does all the paperwork for processing that. We also draw that down against the revenue too, that comes back to the schools.
Is that a consultant?
The compuclaim is the consultant firm that's doing most of the processing. And then we have a full-time staff person on Stacy's team that does that. She's actually recruiting for that position right now. So that salary that's budgeted in the Board of Ed budget, then based on that revenue, we're allowed to draw down an amount equal to that expense.
Karen.
Thanks Blaze. I had a couple of questions regarding the school lunch program. So are we now getting fully reimbursed by the state for our lunch program to provide free lunch for all students?
Is about to resume again, yes. Free lunch for the rest of this school year through the states, took a portion of their own ARP funds and allocated it to free lunch for the rest of the school year.
So we were going to operate at a 300 to $400,000 deficit. Now does, those funds will then wipe that clean, so we won't be operating on a deficit? That's a question. And then the second part of that is, did we have funds allocated to the school lunch program that we no longer need to spend on the school lunch program because now we're being reimbursed by the state? So that's the second question.
Yeah, good, both great questions. The first one is that the School Lunch Fund is its own enterprise fund, so it, it's self, self, you know, revolving. All the funds stay within that account. That account, I think it's clear, you know, we've had really high participation over 90%. And David's team is doing a lot of great work, but because of the free lunch, you've had over 90% participation. So historically, the food service program runs at a, at a fairly significant loss every year. It's not a self-sustaining operation just in and of itself. The, the general fund usually makes a contribution. This upcoming budget year, because of the high participa, participation rate and the federal funds coming into the program, it does not need, because the overhead expense stays the same, but you have a lot more participation going on. It will not need a subsidy from the general fund.
Okay. I think that answered my question.
Any more questions? I have a couple. Blaze, can you go over the special education $800,000 potential interim we have to go for?
Sure, yeah. So you're reading before you in the report, there is, the special ed budgets obviously starting to put a little bit of, of pressure on the overall budget. And, and to be clear, because Dr. H does a lot of, is doing a lot of great work. The pressure that we're in right now, I understand, is not, you know, is a lot better than usual. What we're looking at still though is almost a million dollars in excess of budget, which is putting a lot of pressure on the operating budget at the moment. So we're in talks right now, Dr. H, and, and actually with Dr. Jones, we talked about how we're going to mitigate this so we can, you know, maintain our operations and not have to pull money out of elsewhere in the budget to, to meet this mandated program. So we're going to be exploring submitting an interim. That interim, the goal of that interim is to support the special education program. And we're just in the infancy of this, Joe, I don't know if it's necessarily an $800,000 interim to cover the full exposure. But because specifically of the work Dr. H is doing, we're bringing in significantly higher excess cost. So last year, the, the town had a budget, you know, we budgeted $900,000 in excess cost revenue. But Dr. H brought in almost nearly double that. That all goes to the general fund. Same thing this year, right now, the taxpayer, the, the model was built on the taxpayer, right, the, perceiving $900,000. We're on par right now, according to Stacy, to be somewhere similar to where we were last year. Because of how, you know, we're getting more things recorded, more, you know, the reporting structure, she could get the specifics. But the revenue is looking to come in again, potentially, you know, 1.5 to 1.8 million. So to support the budget exposure of the special ed program, we're exploring an interim potentially of the difference between that budgeted amount and the excess revenue to support that deficit. What that actually looks like yet, I, I don't have it to put before you because we're just in our infancy of talking about that. But the goal of that interim would be to support the special education program, but also maintain no impact to the taxpayer because we'd only be looking at a dollar amount equal to the excess revenue over the $900,000 budgeted.
So we have significant credit in the general fund from reimbursements from the state in excess, well in excess of the interim we're going for, thanks to Dr. H's work. Is that what you're saying?
I think that would be a fair way to look at it right now, yes.
Okay, I've got a second question. I noticed a, a significant decrease in capital balance month on month. Could you please explain why?
That's a really good question. That's a, that's a significant number. So you'll see that capital, open capital is down 1.9 million month over month. That is because of the execution rate, partially because of the execution rate. And then also right now, as I mentioned earlier, Dan Watson, Elisa from his team, Kimberly Castoro and my team, myself, Dr. Jones, we, we've been doing a lot of work on capital over the last few months. And we actually returned since the end of December through this report, $679,000 back to the general fund and capital funds that were to the BOE. That's through going through every single account, closing out accounts with open projects or, or open funds, but that were completed. And by doing that, we were able to return about $679,000 to the general fund and, and work and, and funds that were no longer needed.
So we're getting stuff done. Is that what you're saying?
I would say that's a fair way to say it, yeah.
Okay, that's good news. Anybody else? Any comments? Any, any, anymore? That's it. Now Blaze, I believe you're up. Our next topic, transfers?
Yeah, sure. So transfers, this is just an informational transfer. And all's it, all's it, it's pretty straightforward just by board policy. It's, it really is kind of barely on the threshold of even being informational, but it's still within the same department. And it's over the, the $10,000 threshold, so, but it's, it's 300s to 300s. And we keep our accounts extremely locked down here. This actually wouldn't even be a transfer on the town side. But we do it for a good budget control, so that's good. But you're basically, it's very straightforward. So if anyone has any questions, you can let me know, but.
Great, thank you Blaze. Anybody on transfers? No, we're good. Okay, thanks Blaze.
Thank you, everybody.
Onto our action items. Who wants to make a motion? Anybody here, oh, Karen wants to make a motion. Go ahead.
No, I'll, I'll happily make a motion to, to approve the, what? I know, I've been trying to pull it up. Move my stuff around and I couldn't find it. I'm making, there's nothing written on here, but I'm making an approach to approve Guitar II course for the inclusion in the Greenwich High School Course of Study Guide as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor? Oh, no, wait, do we have discussion?
Yes, what hap, what happened to linear algebra?
That was going to be my question.
Putting it off to a, no, there seems to be a bunch of discuss, inconclusive discussions. We couldn't come to conclusions on discussions, so we're putting it off to the next meeting.
Who couldn't come to conclusions of discussions?
Did you discuss it with anybody?
Did I discuss it with anybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I had multiple discussions with many members and we couldn't come to any conclusions.
I see. So we're not putting it on the agenda, is, we're not voting on it tonight because the thought was we weren't going to get an, an 8-0 vote?
Mr. Chair, would you like to let Dr. Jones maybe address it as our professional educator on what the decision that was made?
I'm just confused.
So when we met for our monthly planning and our agenda planning meeting, several of you, I think, are wanting to discuss it a little bit more. And Dr. Mercanti, Anthony, I think your comments at the last meeting really resonated with some people about the stress and the pressure of, you know, whatever the highest level course is that we offer, we know we're going to have a significant number of students who are capable that are going to want to take that course, even if they're overloaded with, with other courses. And it's not a matter of not putting it on the agenda. It was trying to get it, give us more time for thought. The, one of the reasons we felt comfortable doing that is I reached out, had a conversation with Andrew Byrne, who's head of the department. He felt like it was not going to have any impact whatsoever. It's still sitting in the course of study guides. It's, it says, you know, when approved by the board or if approved by the board. So they can actually look and see how many kids really even still have interest. He does not believe he has enough students next year, and if you remember, he said that at our meeting, to run the course. So there wasn't as much of an urgency where Guitar II is taught during the same time as Guitar I. That course, we know there are plenty of students for, so it's really just taking a little bit more time and to allow the board to have a conversation at some point.
So is it something we're going to be putting on our calendar for an additional discussion, discussion item when we get to agenda planning?
I think so. I, I would, I would support that for sure.
That was going to be my question too.
I would support it for you as well.
Finally found something I disagree with you on, Mike.
All right, with no more discussion, let's take a vote on Guitar II. All in favor, please raise your hand. I believe that passes unanimously. Thank you, Anne, for hanging around. Okay, let's talk about a, a agenda plan. Do we want to put linear math on the agenda plan? Okay, let's put that on there and then we'll continue to discuss it till the next meeting. Any more additions?
If we could put the GHS entryway in for a vote in March?
Very good. We'll put that in as well. Thank you. Sorry, Michael, I was just getting to the page. Go ahead.
I'm wondering if we want to put a placeholder somewhere this spring to have a discussion or to hear from the administration around the literacy curriculum recommendations. We know in response to the, to the state legislation and things like that, we know that that's something we're working on. So it's probably something that we're going to have to talk about at some point. So I wonder if it makes sense is putting a placeholder in late spring. I don't know. I defer to you, Tony.
We could certainly update the board on where we are and that will go in, I believe it's next week. We had heard they may push the date back, but as of today, I'm not aware that they have pushed it back. And I will say, Kim Palladino has done a tremendous, tremendous amount of work on our waiver application in order to be able to maintain the programming that we've been working on for the last several years. So I think they'd be more than happy to share that with the Board of Education.
I see Laura, the, I would think it's an important topic for the community and whatnot. So getting an update on that in April or May would probably make sense.
Put it on the agenda for April with the bouncing for whatever reason, we'll certainly consider that. So let's put it on for April. Anybody else in agenda planning? Laura?
I can't give you a firm date, but once we have an approved design from the Building Committee, we'll be coming to the board for approval of the design for Central.
Well, I guess, I guess we can wait and put that on during the, wait for that result.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? There is a, something that it's more on the personal side of things and I just want to see how everybody feels. I have a very unimportant conflict on May 18th. Cody has an unimportant conflict on May 18th. And Michael doesn't know it, but he also has an unimportant conflict on May 18th. So, something like that. So if, and I won't do anything now, but I just want to bring it up in conversation that if we, if it's convenient to all involved, to consider changing that date. I have not thought of an alternative date at this point, but just, just to consider it, we'll talk about it during the, during the time between now and the next meeting. I believe that's it. We just need a motion from Laura.
Motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second? Karen, all in favor of adjourning, please put your hand up. That seems unanimous. Thank you. We are done.